Buenas tardes a todos. Hoy es jueves, 16 de mayo de 2019. El Comité de Derechos de Seguridad, Salud, Energía y Trabajadores llegará a orden. Son 9:34 AM. Soy Teresa Mosqueta, la presidenta del comité. Estaré acompañada por el miembro del Consejo Bagshaw y el miembro de Consejo Herbert. El miembro de Consejo Juarez es excuso por hoy y apreciamos que todos ellos estén escuchando si no están aquí. Tenemos ocho temas de agenda hoy, así que vamos a ir bastante rápido. Tenemos reanuncios del consejo de Ali Abdul a la Comisión de Estándares de Trabajo, los anuncios de Jillian Comro a la Coalición de Aumento de la Casa de Capitolio, dos reanuncios y un anuncio al Comité de Supervisión de la Presidencia de la Casa y un breve informe sobre la rezona de Fort Lawton y el plan de desarrollo de la red. Y finalmente, un breve informe sobre el Plan Administrativo y Financiero de la Presidencia de la Casa. Creo que este va a ser un encuentro muy pesado, centrado en la vivienda. Nos centramos en las cuestiones de la vivienda y la salud. Cuando no tienes un hogar, es difícil de ser saludable. Nos centramos en los problemas de trabajo y cuando no tienes un trabajo, es difícil de poder pagar un hogar saludable. Y nos centramos en la energía para asegurarnos de que todos tienen la capacidad de encender sus luces y que puedan pagarlo también. Así que eso es lo que nos centramos aquí en el Comité de Derechos de la Salud, la Seguridad y los Derechos de Trabajadores. Hice esa explicación para nuestros nuevos amigos que están en el público. Quiero bienvenida a todos los que están aquí desde el centro de la escuela de Maple, Beacon Hill. Gracias a los primeros de quinto grado por estar aquí. Una gran aplauso por todo lo que están haciendo hoy. Entendemos que están aquí mirando las tres ramas del gobierno. ¿Y cuáles son las tres ramas del gobierno? Legislativa, judicial, ejecutiva y judicial. ¡Genial! ¡Buen trabajo! Así que bienvenimos a la maestra Marsha Ventura. Gracias mucho por estar aquí. Y tenemos testimonios públicos. Así que si usted y sus estudiantes o alguien más que está aquí quisiera firmar testimonio público, lo que haremos es tener la oportunidad de escuchar a todos ustedes que quieran decir algo. Verá un pequeño reloj aquí, así que tiene dos minutos para decir sus palabras. Y te permitiremos hablar en el micrófono y luego dirás tu nombre y lo que estás aquí para compartir con nosotros. Gracias por ser parte de esta rama legislativa a nivel municipal. Estamos muy emocionadas de tenerte en nuestras chambres legislativas aquí hoy. Soy una de nueve miembros legislativas y represento a toda la ciudad. Así que son todas 725,000 personas aquí en nuestra ciudad. Si piensas en esta rama legislativa comparada con la rama legislativa de D.C., represento alrededor de la misma cantidad de personas que los miembros del Congreso. ¿Conocen a quién es nuestro miembro del Congreso aquí en Seattle? ¿Quién representa en la Casa de Representantes? Deborah Smith, bien, sí. También Pramila Jayapal, ¿está aquí en Seattle? ¿Alguien más?
Así que recibimos una carta... Así que escribimos cartas a Adam Smith, en realidad, su asistente legislativo.
Vaya, ve a la cámara. ¡Oh, genial! Adam Smith llegó a ustedes. ¡Eso es excelente! ¡Oh, bien! Bueno, estamos muy emocionadas de tenerte. Muchas gracias. Esta es Erin House. Ella es nuestra asistente legislativa que trabaja en vivienda, transporte, energía, zoning, todas estas cosas que hacen posible que vivamos en la ciudad donde trabajamos y estudiamos. Así que por qué no vamos adelante y comenzemos. Y maestra Ventura, ¿quería compartir algunas palabras antes de empezar con el testimonio público?
No, estoy tan emocionada de verte y ver la rama legislativa en acción.
Bueno, estamos emocionadas de tenerte. Así que antes de empezar con algunos de los estudiantes, hablemos de los amigos de la Asociación de Los Maestros, Alicia Ruiz. Te agradecería venir a la cámara. Muchas gracias por estar aquí hoy.
Mi nombre es Alicia Ruiz. Hoy represento a la Asociación de Los Maestros. Y entusiasmiadamente apoyamos la rezona de Fort Lawton. Gracias.
Muchas gracias. Estamos muy emocionadas de tener a Fort Lawton en nuestro comité. Y para los amigos en el público que está viendo, tenemos agendas en la parte de frente también. Te agradecería tomar algunas de ellas. La siguiente persona que tenemos para hablar es Simon Rosenthal. Rosenthal. Hola, Simon.
Hola, soy Simon y estoy en el quinto grado. Creo que la desesperanza es demasiado grande en Seattle. Creo que muchas personas tienen problemas que las causan desesperar que podrían ayudar con el dinero que vayan hacia los encantamientos cuando no hay suficientes encantamientos autorizados para todas las personas desesperadas en Seattle. En lugar de eso, creo que debería haber más apartamentos para que las personas desesperadas puedan tener vivienda antes de lidiar con otros problemas. Además, podrían obtener un tiempo donde su vivienda sea pagada para que puedan concentrarse en conseguir un trabajo. Para los encantamientos no autorizados, la gente podría ir a ellos y ayudarles con sus problemas individuales y llevarlos a vivienda. Estas son mis soluciones para la desesperanza. Gracias por tu tiempo.
Muchas gracias, Simon. Estoy de acuerdo contigo 100%. Ahora tenemos a Tian Li Guan.
Hola, mi nombre es... Hola, miembros del consejo. Mi nombre es Tian y estoy en el quinto grado. Estoy aquí para hablar sobre la desesperanza, que es un problema. Creo que una solución a la desesperanza debería ser, en lugar de construir más edificios, creo que podríamos construir refugios o apartamentos donde las personas desesperadas pudieran vivir. Me preocupa este problema porque paso por las personas desesperadas al día a día y me siento mal por ellas. Mis padres no dan dinero a las personas desesperadas, pero en mi corazón quiero dar dinero a ellas o ayudarlas de alguna manera. Pero hablando contigo, tengo la oportunidad de ayudarlas o al menos hacerlas mejor para que vivan. Espero que todavía continúes pensando en este problema. Pero gracias a todos por venir y hablar y tomar tiempo de su agenda para estar aquí.
Muchas gracias, Tian. Así que ahora nos acompaña el miembro del Consejo Herbert. El miembro Lisa Herbert representa el Distrito Southwest West, que es West Seattle. Puedes verlo aquí a través de estas ventanas. Y ella es una alternativa a este comité, así que cuando alguien no puede estar aquí, ella viene y trabajamos mucho en derechos humanos y problemas de trabajo y todas las cosas buenas. La siguiente que tenemos es Angelina Zhu.
Hola, mi nombre es Angelina Zhu y estoy en el quinto grado. Estoy aquí para hablar sobre la desesperanza en Seattle. Creo que una solución a la desesperanza podría ser bajar los precios de la vivienda y tener un espacio vacío que se use para las desesperadas. Me preocupa este problema porque hay tantas desesperadas en Seattle. Oí que Seattle es una de las ciudades top 10 de las más desesperadas. Eso no es un buen signo de que la gente quiera venir a nuestra ciudad. Verán tantas desesperadas. ¿Quieren vivir aquí? Y hay tantas jóvenes desesperadas en la ciudad. Algunas personas no se preocupan por cómo los niños y adultos viven en las calles. Por eso estoy hablando contigo sobre este problema, porque me preocupa. Gracias.
Muchas gracias. Ahora tenemos a Carmelo Jordan.
Hola, mi nombre es Carmelo. Recientemente, la población desesperada ha estado creciendo. Creo que la solución a este problema es, en lugar de construir tantos edificios, usar ese espacio para encantamientos autorizados o hacer más apartamentos. Me preocupa este problema porque casi todos los días pasan desesperados. Creo, ¿tienen un lugar para ir? Y la mayoría del tiempo la respuesta es no. Así que si hay más encantamientos autorizados o más apartamentos, las personas necesitan preocuparse dónde van a dormir. Gracias.
Muchas gracias. Ahora tenemos a Susanna Chan.
Hola, mi nombre es Susanna. Tengo 11 años. Voy a la escuela de Maple. Estoy en el quinto grado. Estoy muy emocionada de poder conocerte por primera vez. Estoy aquí para hablar sobre la desesperanza. Hay más desesperados allí todos los días. Necesitamos ayudarles. Hay más todos los días llenando las calles de Seattle. Necesitamos soluciones que funcionen. Tengo soluciones. Mi solución es que, en lugar de construir más edificios, deberíamos usar esos espacios para construir apartamentos o encantamientos autorizados para las desesperadas. Deberíamos construirlo alrededor de la ciudad donde están las tiendas. Las personas todavía tienen trabajos. Caminan muchas horas y millas solo para llegar a un lugar. Se cansan mucho todos los días por caminar tanto. Necesitan descansar. Otra solución es que no se hagan hasta que las personas desesperadas encuentren otro lugar para quedarse. Si se hagan hasta 24 horas, las personas desesperadas incluso perderán sus pertenencias originales. Cuanto más se hagan, más cosas pierden. Si vamos a hacerlo, denles al menos dos a tres días. 24 horas no es suficiente tiempo. Lo que me preocupa más es los niños que son desesperados. Algunos de los niños son muy jóvenes. Intentan sobrevivir siendo desesperados, pero al mismo tiempo están tratando de obtener buenas notas en la escuela. Realmente necesitamos detener la población de las desesperadas. Gracias.
Muchas gracias. La siguiente persona es Anthony Santiago. Bienvenido.
Hola, mi nombre es Anthony. Recientemente, la desesperanza ha estado volviendo a ser un problema enorme en Seattle. Cientos y cientos de personas están ganando desesperadas todos los días siempre que pierden su trabajo o toman drogas y beben alcohol. Afortunadamente, encontré soluciones para este enorme problema. Una solución a este problema es tener encantamientos autorizados para grupos de personas desesperadas. La razón por la que prefiero los encantamientos autorizados mucho más que los refugios es porque los refugios no tienen privacidad, espacio para que la gente pague su bagaje y no tienen privacidad. A veces necesitamos un tiempo solo, incluso las personas desesperadas. Otra solución es tener edificios restantes que ya no se usan para apartamentos para las personas desesperadas. Por ejemplo, Amazon ha planeado dar un oficio para las personas desesperadas. Mi idea de usar este oficio es hacer la mitad del oficio como un lugar para que las personas desesperadas vivan y la otra mitad del lugar como un espacio de trabajo. Algunas personas le gusta la idea de construir apartamentos encima de las tiendas y otros lugares de trabajo. Me gusta la idea también. Si no hacemos nada para ayudar a las personas desesperadas a salir de las calles, nunca tendremos que hacer cosas que queramos hacer, como tener los olimpiadas en Seattle. Gracias.
Gracias. La siguiente persona comparte mi nombre, Teresa. Hola, Teresa. Bienvenida. Especie mi nombre sin un H, pero usted tiene un H, así que la gente sabrá la diferencia entre nosotros ahora. Vaya, Teresa.
Hola, mi nombre es Teresa. Estoy en el quinto grado en la escuela de Maple. Quiero hablar contigo sobre la desesperanza. Hay encantamientos en la ciudad para las personas desesperadas y la policía les dice que tienen que estar fuera durante 24 horas, así que deben ir a otro lugar. Creo que una solución a la desesperanza podría ser que la ciudad dé a las personas desesperadas un lugar para quedarse. Pueden ir a su trabajo y tomar cuelgas y comer su comida y les sirvan ropa fresca y incluso pueden recibir dinero y pueden comprar su propia casa y entonces no tendrán que estar ahí más. Hay algunos encantamientos de alrededor y probablemente habrá casas y familias allí. Hay personas desesperadas que viven en encantamientos y... y...
Lo has hecho.
Y ellos... ellos... tienen que vivir allí y tienen que...
¡Buen trabajo! Sí, tienen que dejar su hogar y no tienen un lugar para ir. Eso es correcto. Muchas gracias, Teresa. Hiciste un gran trabajo. La siguiente persona que tenemos es Josie. Hola, Josie.
Hola, mi nombre es Josephine Leroy, o Josie. Y estoy aquí para hablar sobre el problema de las personas desesperadas. Y creo que debería haber más cocinas de cocina y más recursos para las personas desesperadas. Y creo que no debería haber más hinchas para las personas desesperadas.
Muchas gracias, Josie. Buen trabajo. La última persona que tenemos es Tania Leroy. Hola, bienvenida.
Hola, mi nombre es Tania Leroy y soy una madre de Maple. Y hay muchas buenas sugerencias sobre la vivienda para las personas desesperadas. Mi preocupación es la desigualdad de la vivienda, supongo, en Seattle. Ha habido un aumento directo con la desesperanza, con los precios de la renta. Correlan directamente. Y si de alguna manera abrimos la brecha de las personas que pierden su renta y se vuelven desesperadas, terminan en la calle y no tienen ingresos. De alguna manera necesitan los recursos para desarrollarse. Podríamos darles un hogar, pero todavía necesitan poder ganar $150,000 a $200,000 al año para vivir en Seattle. Así que debe haber algún tipo de puerta para que eso se abra, para realmente erradicar la desesperanza en Seattle.
Absolutamente.
Gracias.
Muchas gracias. ¿Hay alguien más que quisiera testificar hoy que no obtuvo la oportunidad de firmar? Maestra Marsha? No? Bienvenida, maestra Marsha Ventura.
Gracias, miembros del consejo. Solo... siento ser una maestra. Creo que tienen algunas soluciones realmente buenas que ven desde el sentido común. Y espero que podamos escuchar a esta próxima generación porque tienen algunas ideas realmente buenas. Pero muchas gracias a ambos por su trabajo en el consejo y por su servicio a nuestro gobierno.
Muchas gracias. Una más aplauso para todos ustedes también. Así que quiero agradecerte por estar aquí. Sé que tomaste tiempo de tu horario de clase para venir aquí hoy. Quiero agradecer a los miembros de Consejo Sawant y Ted, que está en la parte de atrás. Muchas gracias por organizar que los amigos vinieran. Cuando trabajamos en temas aquí, los dividimos en varios comités, como puede haber visto. El consejo de Sawant trabaja en temas relacionados con la desesperanza. Y en nuestro comité trabajamos en temas relacionados con la salud, la vivienda y los derechos de los trabajadores, como escuchaste. El miembro de Consejo Herbert trabaja en temas crueles, derechos civiles, arte... Ed... vaya.
Derechos civiles, desarrollo económico, utilidades y arte.
Crueles. Así que dividimos estos problemas porque hay muchos problemas presionantes en la ciudad, como puedes ver, y solo tenemos nueve de nosotros. Todo lo que dijiste hoy es 100% exacto. Y muchas de estas ideas que has hablado son cosas que querríamos poner en la ley. Y vamos a seguir trabajando para cambiar la ley para que podamos tener más vivienda. Tiene unos dos, tres, a veces cuatro a cinco años para crear un hogar real. La puerta, el arco, el edificio que queremos llevar a la gente y luego queremos proporcionarles un consejero y otras servicios de apoyo para que tengan atención médica también. Mientras tanto, tienes razón, tenemos que hacer más para asegurar que la gente no duerme afuera, para que no haya familias y niños y trabajadores que duermen afuera. Y tienes razón, alguien dijo antes, creo que fue Anthony, que dijo que a veces la gente solo necesita un poco de espacio solo y ir a un refugio no te da ese espacio solo. Así que vamos a seguir trabajando para asegurar que todos tienen su propio lugar para llamar a casa, ya sea en una casa pequeña para que puedan entrar a una casa mayor más tarde o asegurando que la gente tenga los refugios que necesitan, para que la gente tenga armas, bañaderas y un cuarto para llamar a su propio. En este momento, solo tenemos seis bañaderas en toda la ciudad para que la gente use si duermen afuera. La ONU, conoces a la ONU que mira a los derechos humanos en todo el mundo. Dijeron que necesitas un baño para cada 20 personas. Eso significaría que necesitamos 224 bañaderos y solo tenemos seis aquí en Seattle. Así que tenemos mucho trabajo que hacer para asegurar que haya bañaderos y cuelgas y cunas y consejeros y atención médica. Y con tu ayuda y buenas ideas hoy, creo que estamos en camino de lograr algunos progresos. Pero va a tomar mucho de nosotros trabajando juntos porque necesitamos ese ingreso y los recursos que hablaste sobre para hacer posible. Así que una gran aplauso por todo lo que estás haciendo. Espero que toda la ciudad escuche a usted esta mañana. Muchas gracias. Maestra Marsha, si nos reunimos aquí, ¿podemos tomar una foto rápida si Erin se sentaba allí y tomó una foto de nosotros? ¿Está bien con el público? Bien.
¿O quieres que vayan aquí? Bien, chicos, vayan aquí rápido. Vamos a la cámara. Vayan donde está Erin. Ted, ¿quieres?
¿Hay padres?
Oh, vayan, padres. Hola, ¿cómo estás? Genial verte.
Una espalda, inclínate con una espalda.
Genial. ¿Qué debemos decir? "Hagamos soluciones para la desesperanza".
¡Hagamos soluciones para la desesperanza!
Gracias por venir y hablar con nosotros.
Bien, bueno, muchas gracias, chicos, por estar aquí hoy. Y tus palabras continuarán resonando mientras trabajamos en estos temas de agenda. Erin, vamos adelante y pasemos al primer tema de negocios, si puedes. En este momento, hablemos de la reanunciación del consejo de Estándares de Trabajo. Los amigos, ven a la mesa. Si podemos tener a Ali Abdul. Aaliya, si estás aquí. Bien, no veo a Aaliya. Bien. Y alguien del consejo de Estándares de Trabajo. Kenny, ¿querías venir y decir algo? Ella no está aquí. Bien, Jill no está aquí aún. ¿Por qué no pasamos? Si está bien con ustedes, miembro de Consejo Herbert. Pasaremos al tercer tema y volveremos a los temas uno y dos. Pasemos a los temas tres, dos, cinco en nuestra agenda. Y mientras lo haces, si podemos, por favor, estar en la mesa con Stephanie y Kelly. Sería genial. Y alguien más que está aquí, hola, en este tema. Creo que la cámara podría no estar por ti.
Vamos a intentarlo de nuevo.
Gracias, Erin.
Anuncios número 01313, 01314 y 01312, miembros del Comité de Supervisión de la Presidencia de la Casa.
Genial. Hola, chicos, muchas gracias por vernos.
Hola, buenas tardes.
Si quieren hacer una introducción rápida, una revisión, estamos muy emocionadas de que los amigos vengan a ser parte de este cuerpo. Realmente emocionadas por los reanuncios y los anuncios al Comité de Supervisión de la Presidencia de la Casa. Anne y Pradita, ¿por qué no hacemos una rápida revisión y luego escuchamos lo que han estado haciendo ustedes?
Eso suena genial. Así que soy Stephanie Velasco con el Oficio de la Vivienda. Y voy a hacer solo una pequeña revisión del Comité de Supervisión de la Presidencia de la Casa y luego, como dijiste, tenemos dos reanuncios. Y estoy acompañada aquí con Kelly Larson, que será un nuevo anuncio. Así que el Comité de Supervisión de la Presidencia de la Casa se forma de 13 miembros cuya misión es monitorear el progreso de los programas de la Presidencia de la Presidencia y luego revisar y proporcionar recomendaciones sobre nuestras políticas de financiación y el Plan Administrativo y Financiero de la Presidencia de la Casa, que ustedes escucharán un poco más tarde en la agenda. Y se forman de amigos de una gama de campos dentro de la comunidad de la vivienda. Así que tenemos a los financiantes, proveedores de vivienda accesibles, arquitectos, desarrolladores, residentes, algo que gana el juego. Y verás eso aquí en nuestros reanuncios. Así que voy a empezar aquí con Anne Malone, que es un reanuncio a través del plazo de Así que Anne Malone es una oficina de desarrollo de negocios para los inversiones de vivienda accesible en U.S. Bancorp, donde es responsable de originar inversiones de crédito de inmigración bajo impuestos en los estados del norte y Rocky Mountain. Ha estado con U.S. Banc desde 2005, previamente sirviendo como gerente de relaciones en la división comercial de la real propiedad comercial del banco, donde originó, escribió y gestionó un portfolio de vivienda accesible de más de $250 millones. Anne Malone también sirve en el Directorio de Directores de Impact Capital y tiene un MBA de la Escuela de Fomento de Negocios en la Universidad de Washington y un BA de Washington University en St. Louis. Así que ese es nuestro primer reanuncio. ¿Debo pasar a nuestro segundo reanuncio? Genial. Así que nuestro segundo reanuncio es Pradita Upadhyay. Y ella también... eso también será a través del plazo de 12/31/2021. Así que Pradita Upadhyay es la directora ejecutiva de la Asociación de Desarrollo de la Comunidad, una organización basada en la comunidad en el Distrito Internacional de Chinatown. La misión de la organización es avanzar en la justicia social y la equidad para los isleños de los pascíficos asiáticos, inmigrantes, refugiados y individuos de baja ingreso. Pradita lidera el trabajo interno en vivienda, desarrollo de la comunidad, desarrollo de la dirección y servicios sociales y está activa en la comunidad y actualmente cochea el grupo de trabajo de estabilización de la comunidad C.I.D., centrado en sostener la vivienda accesible, las empresas pequeñas y las organizaciones de servicios en la comunidad. Así que como ya has oído, tenemos dos perspectivas bastante diversas representadas allí en el Comité de Supervisión de la Presidencia de la Casa. Y así que estamos muy emocionadas por traer un nuevo anuncio de Kelly Larson, que me acompaña aquí hoy. Y Kelly representa la perspectiva de la apoyo permanente a la vivienda y la desesperanza. Y leeré un poco sobre su背景 y luego darle la oportunidad de hablar si quisiera.
Eso es genial.
Así que Kelly Larson es la oficina de programación principal de Plymouth Housing, donde supervisa los servicios proporcionados a los residentes de Plymouth y lidera la iniciativa de desarrollo de políticas y planificación estratégica. Kelly ha participado en numerosos planes de planificación y de servicios de desesperanza en Seattle, King County y todos los grupos de desesperanza, trayendo experiencia relacionada con las operaciones de apoyo permanente a la vivienda y las necesidades de los adultos desesperados cronicamente. Antes de unirse a Plymouth Housing, trabajó como gerente de programa de King County con un enfoque en coordinación de financiación, política y planificación y supervisión de contratos de apoyo permanente a la vivienda. Kelly tiene un máster de grado de administración pública de la Universidad de Washington y ha trabajado para organizaciones dedicadas a los derechos humanos internacionales, derechos inmigrantes y derechos de trabajo.
Excelente. Bienvenida. Muchas gracias por venir aquí, Kelly. ¿Quieres decirnos un poco más sobre ti y por qué te interesa servir?
Sí, estoy esperando esto. Creo que la vivienda es un derecho humano. La Presidencia de la Presidencia de la Casa es tan crítica. He estado involucrada en esta comunidad por más de una década. Estoy inspirada por mi familia, que inmigró justo por la autopista de Japón y su experiencia en este país. Y eso es lo que me motiva a hacer el trabajo de justicia social en mi carrera. Creo que la causa que Plymouth está involucrado en, el fin de la desesperanza, es una de las causas más importantes que la ciudad enfrenta. Y creo que nuestra solución, nuestra intervención en el apoyo a la vivienda es una de las formas más efectivas e impactantes de hacer vivienda a las personas más vulnerables en nuestra ciudad. Así que ese es mi lente y perspectiva que traigo al Comité de Supervisión de la Presidencia de la Casa. Y estoy realmente afortunada de trabajar con este increíble personalidad en el Oficio de la Vivienda y mis miembros de comité. Gracias.
Gracias. ¿Cuestiones?
Solo quiero agradecerle por su voluntad de servir, así como todo lo que has hecho en el ámbito de la vivienda durante muchos, muchos años. Y solo un saludo a Plymouth. Gran, gran piece en The Times sobre los proyectos de apoyo a la vivienda que estás trayendo online y específicamente el genio de aprovechar el financiamiento de los proveedores de salud y su interés, nuestro interés compartido en asegurar que los que necesitan apoyo permanente a la vivienda y que en general están gastando servicios de salud en nuestros hospitales, que hay un fuerte interés en llevar a esos gente a vivienda permanente. Así que realmente estoy emocionada por esos proyectos.
Sí.
Gracias por todo lo que tuviste que hacer para hacerlos funcionar.
Gracias. Es muy emocionante. ¿Tienes algún pensamiento sobre algunos de los mayores desafíos que crees que el Comité de Supervisión de la Presidencia de la Casa tendrá que enfrentar en el futuro? Escuchamos mucho sobre el dinero de la operación y la mantenimiento, ambos derramándose y no siendo suficientes. Ese es uno de los grandes desafíos que sé. Obviamente, tenemos el desafío de no tener suficiente ingreso para construir tan mucho vivienda como queremos. ¿Cuáles son algunos de los grandes desafíos que estás interesada en afrontar en el comité?
Sí, esos son mis... esos son dos de mis tres principales. Mi tercero es un foco dudoso en el 0% a 30% de la rendida media de ingreso en el área. El bracket de ingreso más bajo, las personas más vulnerables en nuestra comunidad. En Plymouth, el ingreso promedio de nuestros habitantes es el 11% AMI. Así que hay una gran necesidad de vivienda para ese grupo de personas que están entre 0 y 15. Y eso realmente debería ser el trabajo que la Presidencia de la Presidencia de la Casa está enfocada, con la necesidad, por supuesto, de los tranches de ingresos. Pero... ¡Hola Sally, cómo estás? Miembro de Consejo Bagshaw. Disculpa. Solo nos movemos entre nosotros en el barrio todo el tiempo.
Oh, bien.
Así que sí, seguir encontrando más recursos para ese tranche de ingresos, 0 a 30% AMI, y dedicando espacio para la mantenimiento operativo, lo cual es crucial, una parte realmente importante de ello. Y también podríamos construir más vivienda. Podemos hacer 0 a 18 meses en el terreno y arriba con el edificio. Es todo el tiempo para reunir todos los recursos. Así que obtenemos más recursos, podemos construir más rápido. Si tenemos el O&amp;M, en realidad podemos hacer que estos edificios funcionen a largo plazo.
Excelente. Bueno, muchas gracias, Kelly. Gracias por unirse a nosotros, miembro de Consejo Bagshaw. Gracias. ¿Algún otro comentario o preguntas? Bien, estamos muy emocionadas por esto, como puedes ver, Kelly tiene un largo compromiso y compromiso con el Comité de la Presidencia de la Casa y la Presidencia de la Presidencia de Derechos Humanos, o debería decir principal. Pradita, estamos muy emocionadas. Es un anuncio de mayoral, reside en el Distrito cuatro. Y Anne es un anuncio de mayoral, reside en el Distrito tres. Así que tenemos algo de excelente conocimiento local que se agregará. So we have some really excellent local knowledge that will be added to the Housing Levy Oversight Committee. If there's no more comments or questions, I'd like to move the committee recommend confirmation of Anne Malone, Pradita Upadhyay. Upadhyay? Okay. And Kelly, you can now? Okay. As a member of the Housing Levy Oversight Committee. Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Opposed? None? It's unanimous. Great. We will move forward this recommendation to the May 20 full council meeting. Great.
Thank you.
So apologies for the change in the schedule. Let's go back to Agenda Item Number One. If we could please be joined at the table by Alia Abdu. And Erin, if you would like to read Agenda Item Number One into the record.
Agenda Item Number One, Appointment 01186, Appointment of Alia Abdu as Member of the Labor Standards Advisory Commission.
Okay, great. And could you also read in Agenda Item Number Two, please? And if we could also be joined at the table by Kenny Pittman and Gillian Cron.
Agenda Item Number Two, Appointment 01282, Appointment of Gillian Cronauer as Member of the Capitol Hill Housing Improvement Program Governing Council.
Wonderful, thank you. Hi, Gillian. How are you? Good to see you, thank you. And Kenny, why don't you come on up here and welcome? Thank you, guys. If you want us to start with introductions from this way down, and we'll have Kenny do some introductory comments before we get started. And just your name for the record.
Jill Cronauer.
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 Thank you.
A lot of vowels in there.
I'm Sarah Shemake. I work at Capitol Hill Housing, where Jill is hopefully about to be a board member.
Okay, great.
And Kenny Pittman, Office of Government Relations.
Okay, wonderful. So we're here to talk about the Capitol Hill Housing Improvement Project Appointment. And Kenny, do you want to get us started here?
Sure. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to present Ms. Jill Cronauer to the Board for confirmation as an appointee to the Capitol Hill Housing. She is currently the Chief Operating Officer for Hunter Capital, which specializes in preserving and historic buildings. And they have a very large footprint in the Capitol Hill First Hill neighborhoods. And she brings a lot of experience, been doing that since 2008. And at one time, and maybe still is the President and Chairperson of the Capitol Hill Chamber of Commerce, and brings a lot of experience to the Board and was came highly, highly recommended.
Excellent, thank you. Do you have any comments about Capitol Hill Housing before we go into Jill's remarks?
Oh, just a little bit more background knowledge. We own and manage 49 buildings across the city of Seattle. And we provide affordable housing and we do community development as well. And our affordable units offer, we offer a range of affordability. We have some subsidized buildings, 30%, all the way up to 80%.
Great, thank you. Well, welcome. Thank you so much for being here, Jill. Tell us a little bit more about yourself and why you're interested in serving on the Capitol Hill Housing Improvement Project.
Sure. I've been working in Capitol Hill for almost 11 years now. And through that time, have worked with Capitol Hill Housing on and off through different community initiatives. They've always been a great community partner. We office in Capitol Hill and have nine properties on Capitol Hill as well. I hope to help bring some knowledge and support through property management, development, and also budgeting and more, that side of things.
Excellent, great. Any questions?
Thank you for doing that work.
Yeah.
Obviously, the more the better in terms of affordable housing.
Absolutely, yes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And you reside in District 3 as well?
I do.
Excellent, okay, great. We're really excited about your appointment and very excited to continue working in partnership with our folks at Capitol Hill Housing. Are there any big challenges that you also want to talk about that you are looking forward to tackling with this appointment?
Well, I think Capitol Housing has a really impressive and daunting pipeline. And so kind of just helping, you know, get our arms around that and, you know, making sure that we're set up for success.
Yes. Great. Comments?
But in spite of that pipeline, I want to thank you for your ongoing commitment to fulfilling the community's interest, as well as this council's interest in ensuring that we move forward in building some senior housing for our LGBTQ community.
Absolutely.
It's a big priority for the public. It's a big priority for this council. I know it's been sort of pits and starts in getting it going, but I'm really pleased to know that it's moving forward. We cannot be a major city without housing for this population any longer, so thank you so much.
I completely agree.
Excellent. Any other comments?
Thank you. It also ties in with our work around age-friendly Seattle, so thank you for doing that.
Excellent. Well, if there's no other comments, I'd like to move that the committee recommend the confirmation of Gillian.
Cronauer.
Cronauer, thank you. As a member of the Capitol Hill Housing Improvement Program, Public Development Authority. Great. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? It is unanimous as well. We will move your recommendation to the full council meeting on May 20. You're not required to be there. You're welcome to be there. But we will speak highly of you and the work that you all do. Very excited to have you and thank you for waiting this morning as we got through the kiddos as well.
It was enjoyable.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I will go ahead and move the confirmation of Alia, who is a reappointment. So there's no need for her to be here today. But just so that you folks know, this is a reappointment to the Labor Standards Advisory Commission. And Alia Abdu is a council reappointment, currently living in North Admiral, District 1. Alia is the owner of Quick Service Restaurant, where she oversees a team of about 137 employees. Alia has worked very hard to provide her employees with educational opportunities and a safe and welcoming workplace for everyone. She is very active in the community and volunteers on behalf of the school district and the National Helping Hands. This will be Alia's second term serving on the commission. Anybody want to make any comments about Alia?
Sure. I just would love to say a few words. I've really enjoyed working with Alia. She is Labor Standards Advisory Committee appointment that I put forward at the beginning of the creation of LSAC and really enjoy both her perspective from a community development and economic development focus, but also really caring deeply about her workforce and going above and beyond sort of the minimum requirements. And has really, I think, helped driven the conversation forward about what it means to be a high-road employer.
Excellent, thank you. I didn't realize that you were the original nominator. Would you like to move her appointment?
Thank you, yes. I would like to move Appointment of Alia Abdu to the Labor Standards Advisory Board.
Excellent. Labor Standards Advisory Commission for reappointment. I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Great. It is unanimous. We will bring forward this reappointment on Monday, May 20 as well. If she is listening, no need to be there in person. Very excited to help represent her, and we will speak highly of her as well. So thank you, Alia, for your continued commitment to the Labor Standards Advisory Commission. With that, let's move on to Items 6 and 7. Erin, if you can please read Items 6 and 7 into the record. And while she's doing that, if Emily, Chip, Kenny, and Tracy could please join us at the table, and we will go ahead with introductions in just a moment.
Agenda Items 6 and 7, CB 119510, An Ordnance Related to Land Use and Zoning, and Resolution 31887, A Resolution Adopting and Approving an Application for Surplus Federal Property at Fort Lawton.
Welcome, guys. Thank you so much for being here. Before we get started, why don't we do introductions? And Tracy, if you want to lead us down to Kenny, and then I'll make a few comments.
Will do. Tracy Ratzle, Council Central Staff.
Chip Nevin, Seattle Parks and Recreation.
Emily Alvarado, Office of Housing.
Rachel Verbort, Seattle Department of Transportation.
Kenny Pittman, Office of Government Relations.
Excellent, thank you so much. So this is the third conversation that we have had in this committee to create 238 new affordable homes, along with ample parks and open space on the former Fort Lawton site, including an initial overview of the plan of the Office of Housing on April 16. Thank you so much, Emily. And wanted to just say very quickly, thank you to Miriam and to Director Walker for also being here for that. We did not get a chance to say thank you to Miriam before her leave of absence. And if she is watching from vacation or somewhere sunny.
Who would miss this?
We just want to say, you know, in addition to praising the team that Director Walker has put together, we want to say Miriam has been an integral part of making this housing come online that we were able to celebrate and highlight in our last few committees. So thanks to Miriam for all of her work. Please do pass on our appreciation for her tenure here and for all that she'll hopefully continue to do on housing and affordable issues.
Can I just pile on on that? But also, Emily, thank you for your leadership on this. We talked about here just the three meetings that you've come. We didn't talk about the 14 years prior to that. And I don't know how many meetings, if you start not just community, but how many that we have had here somewhere in city council chambers. It's extraordinary. And I'm really glad that we've held the course and that we've gotten where we are and working with the school district for their six acres for the active, probably fields that they're going to be building at some point, but thank you.
So we're just talking about only the three meetings we've had just this year. But let's not forget, we've had 14 to 15 years that you guys have all been working on this, so thank you so much. We also had a deep dive from the department and community partners on the implementation of key elements of the plan on May 2. And so today, we're looking forward to having a little bit more of a comprehensive overview with a reminder to folks that we do have a public hearing on the redevelopment plan and rezone legislation on Tuesday, May 21 at 5:30. It will be right here in council chambers. We want to remind people that childcare will be provided, so bring your kiddos. And the discussion and possible vote on the redevelopment plan and rezone legislation will be on June 6 here in the Housing, Health, Energy, and Workers' Rights Committee. So with that, I have a few other comments, but why don't we go ahead and get started?
Okay, so this is a light presentation in terms of slides, because I think the primary focus was to answer questions that folks have raised, council members have pointed to in the previous meetings, particularly around some of the parks and open space component, the Seattle Public Schools component, as well as some questions around future infrastructure and planning needs around transportation and other, and other infrastructure purposes. So as a reminder, I'm not going to linger on this slide. This is a vision to provide, as you said, up to 238 affordable homes, a range of permanent supportive housing, housing for low-wage working people, and permanently affordable homeownership for low-income households on approximately nine to 10 acres. And then parks and park-related uses that include approximately 13 acres for passive recreation, active open space on approximately five to six acres, and then a maintenance building. And if you have questions about the maintenance building, we can pause now, or I can just keep moving. Okay. The Seattle Public Schools component, during, as we had mentioned when Fred Podesta was here at our last presentation, during the EIS, we had a significant amount of comment from the public of having an interest in creating educational uses out as part of this Fort Lawton redevelopment plan. And so the EIS had studied the opportunity to use active multipurpose fields. And the Seattle Public Schools and the City of Seattle share a need and interest in providing multipurpose athletic space. It is a need that's identified by us, and it is an educational need that's identified by the school district. So what this plan does is it allows for the opportunity for Seattle Public Schools to submit an application for the purposes of a conveyance for approximately five to six acres that they would use to create those multipurpose athletic fields. And accompanying this redevelopment plan and application is an ordinance and an MOU between SPS, Seattle Public Schools, and the City of Seattle that would outline what some of the roles, responsibilities, and timeline would be relative to that arrangement. And a few things to highlight in this case. The redevelopment plan identifies that the, this exists as an opportunity for SPS, but it also acknowledges that in the event that SPS chooses not to go ahead with this conveyance, that Seattle Parks and Recreation will proceed so that we can ensure the public benefit that has been outlined in this redevelopment plan. That this will likely be the subject of a joint-use facilities agreement. These are the agreements that are regularly in place with the Seattle Parks and Recreation, because, as I said, there is a joint need for active recreation space across the city. The memorandum of agreement that we have negotiated with Seattle Public Schools outlines even more specific details. And it says that they have the right to submit an application to the federal government, the Department of Education specifically, for the five to six acres for educational uses. And the district will decide, per the terms of this agreement, whether or not they want to go ahead with that acquisition based on the terms that are approved by the Department of Education. As in some of the other conveyances, there is a chance that the discount is not a full discount. It could be an up to 100%, depending on the approach that's taken by Seattle Public Schools. So if they are not interested in the terms that are provided by the federal government, which would call on them to provide more resources than they might otherwise want to based on the appraised value of the land, they may choose not to participate in this deal. And this memorandum gives them the exclusive authority to be able to make that determination. The financial responsibilities are outlined in this memorandum of agreement, particularly for the purposes of pre-development and caretaker costs. So as you all know, the federal government has, we, this has taken a long time. And one of the ways in which we maintain our good standing with the federal government is by virtue of a lease agreement that sets out responsibilities that we need to accomplish in order with them on this property. And part of that is paying for costs associated with the present infrastructure, safety, and security at the site. And so this memorandum acknowledges that SPS is responsible for a quarter of some portion of those pre-development and caretaker costs, up to an outlined amount of $249,000. And that cap is set because this MOA will be supported by the superintendent. And then upon their interest in the application, should they choose to go ahead with the conveyance, they will then take board action in order to accept the acquisition of the site. And at that point, the board action could allow for an increase in proportional pre-development and caretaker costs attributed to the Seattle Public Schools. If the district elects not to acquire the property, as I said previously, this MOU, MOA creates even more explicit understanding of the timeline by which they need to make their determination so that we can ensure that our Parks and Recreation Department can go ahead and have the outcome of multipurpose athletic fields at the site. The ordinance that is submitted along with this memorandum outlines that the departments and the Seattle Public Schools can go ahead and enter into an MOA substantially similar to the one that's presented to and hopefully supported and adopted by you all.
And that legislation will be transmitted, we think, in the next couple of weeks. So we'll have it in time for the June 6 action by the committee.
Oh, good. So it's all in one, one package?
Yes, it'll be all in one package. The other thing I will say is the MOA does set out timelines for action by the school district. So this is not going to be, you get to take forever to submit your application, forever to develop. There are specific timelines by which they have to perform those different functions, which I think is good, gives us the opportunity, if they choose not to, to step in in the absence of them deciding to move forward.
Can I just ask the two of you how this ties in? Before then, Mayor Burgess was, before he left, one of the things that he did in November of that year, 2017, was to sign an agreement that the school board president, Leslie Harris, signed also. And it had multiple things that the school district was going to do. And it sounds like we're stepping up here, and they're stepping up with around the six acres. But there were some other things in that agreement, and I'm wondering whether or not we're still discussing those elements.
I'm not in a position to, to talk about, I'm not on the front lines of the negotiations more broadly with Seattle Public Schools about satisfying the terms of that MOA, but understand that for the purposes of this specific line item, we've reached an agreement, both of, both Seattle Public Schools and our side, or the executive field, that this both satisfies that agreement. that agreement and is a good opportunity. So we'd be happy to get back to you on that.
Super. And I know, Emily, this is not in your bailiwick. However, I think there was a sense within the city anyway that we had agreed on multiple parts. And carving out one part and saying, hey, we're going to do that, but then the other parts are not addressed, I think is of concern. So I'd like, and I think Marshall Foster is working on this, and I know Fred Podesta in his new role is as well. So I just would like to flag that I think it's still important for us to go back and look at the terms of the agreement that we signed in November of 2017, make sure that it's all moving forward.
Absolutely. Do you want to do your last slide? So we've talked about in the last presentation the various components of the plan and the application to the federal government. Then there is a technical process by which we would go ahead after adoption of the plan by the city and adoption of the plan by the federal government, that we would proceed with actual applications for conveyances. And that is a complicated process. I wanted to be clear that all of the descriptions of acreage that we've used for the purposes of presentation will be corroborated by virtue of a survey and an appraisal of the site. That will be done prior to the conveyance process. The lease agreement stipulates that we will request for the acquisitions, we'll submit our request for acquisitions to the Army by January 1, 2020. That's a deadline in the lease. And those conveyances will be several. They'll include the component for homeless and supportive housing that will come from HUD. There'll be a negotiated sale. That means we'll be paying market value, being really clear about that, for the purposes of the affordable rental housing. That's not a technical eligible conveyance, but we believe that it's really important in creating a diverse and supportive community. The public conveyance for Habitat for Humanity for the purposes of self-help homeownership would come through the U.S. Department of HUD again. There'll be a public conveyance to the U.S. Interior Department for the parks and recreation uses, including the passive park space and the maintenance building. For the opportunity for the Seattle Public School, it would be a conveyance through the Department of Education that they'll be seeking. And in the event that it's not, it will go through the Department of Interior to satisfy it for Seattle Parks and Recreation. And then also important to note that presently, the main right-of-way running throughout the redevelopment area is a private right-of-way. It's owned by the federal government, Texas Way. And so we'll also have a public conveyance for the purposes of turning that into a public And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, great. So the goal for today is for us to really identify some of the issue areas that have come up in both presentations before, in community meetings. Many of us have been part of the community discussions over the last few years or longer on this issue. One of the issues that I heard about in community and then also was discussed on the Seattle Channel was this desire to sort of right-size or reduce the size of the parking lots for the park maintenance facility. And in our ongoing desire to try to reduce the footprint of surface parking lots, it did seem to resonate a little bit. And so we do have Chip here from the office, from the Department of Parks and Recreation, looking forward to hearing sort of your analysis on analyzing the needs, the size of the parking lot. And my hope and my desire, as we've been talking about and working up amendments on, is to see if we can reduce the size of the surface-level parking, or surface parking lot so that we can create more park space and ideally more areas for natural habitat. Thanks for being here.
Well, thank you for having us. So you're right, it's a big parking lot. I don't think anyone would disagree that it's a lot of pavement out there. And so we did look at, so the intent of the department is to move our Central West crew there with the associated equipment, trucks, and materials. And so we looked at other facilities that had the same level of service. And we feel very confident that we can reduce the parking area by about 30%. 30% is about an acre. I think there's about three acres of parking there, including the building. It's about three acres. And it seems like we can take about a third off. And what that would look like, we think it would look like taking the northern 100 feet and kind of incorporating that, turning that green incorporated into the hillside above. Obviously, we need to make sure that vehicle circulation and drainage all works, but that is the intent.
So can I just ask a question? Chip, so the 100 feet, you carve that off, you dig up the pavement, and you plant, what, native trees or consistent with what's already there, or do we know?
I don't, we haven't got that far in discussions. I think the community wants greenery, and I would assume that we'd be tearing up the pavement and planting consistent with what is already on the hillside to the north. But I don't, we haven't, I don't know exactly what we'd be planting there.
I'm not even sure what's there right now.
So one of the issues that we did hear about, you know, as we think about greenery or natural habitat, is that this would be an additional place for the blue heron to be able to travel through and live in. So I assume that it would be trying to repopulate it with natural habitat and create space for the blue heron. Is that accurate?
That's correct. So, I mean, the whole Quanis Ravine and parts of this part of Fort Lawton are identified as heron habitat, even though the herons have since moved to Commodore Park. But it is all, it is all part of the heron habitat. And they're, so yes, we would be planting it natively, so.
May I just ask that we reach out to our friends with the Heron Habitat Group, make sure that they're included as we're moving forward about what they would recommend that we plant so that they have some input. And I think simultaneously that there is quite an organization around bird watching in Discovery Park. I'd like to invite them also to provide us with their recommendations. So if I can just ask.
Yeah, that's a great idea. We do work with Heron Habitat helpers quite a bit, so we'll make sure they're involved. But you're right, there's a big burning population, burger population.
So I think that's great. In terms of implementation, I also want to make sure folks hear that when their issues are raised, we do take those issues seriously and we do try to find remedies for them. You know, this happens to be something that's near and dear to my heart, trying to remove surface-level parking spaces where it's not needed. And I think this is a great example. I want to give our council colleagues a heads up that as we get closer to amending both the bill and Attachment 1, which is the large document in your packet, I will be putting forward a amendment for Section 5.2.4, which is the park maintenance building, to acknowledge that Seattle Parks and Recreation has analyzed the feasibility of reducing the parking area and the addition would be, based on usage requirements at other similar facilities, as you heard. Seattle Parks and Recreation has determined that it can reduce the parking area by approximately 30%. The intent is to convert the northern approximately 100 feet of the parking lot to open space. But the exact configuration will be determined by circulation and drainage constraints. Got that out. And we should also maybe potentially add in consultation or in discussions with our community partners as well who've been working on this issue.
I'm sure you will, but just specifying it, letting them know we're sending love. And we really want to hear what their recommendations are.
Okay, great.
That's a great idea.
So if there's any other comments on the parks, I do have a few comments and questions for our folks from SDOT and Metro can be there here today, but thank you so much for being here from SDOT. We've heard that there is also a desire to make sure that we're increasing transit options and serving the future Fort Lawton community and residents. And would love to hear more about the process that both SDOT and Metro will go through to analyze additional transit needs in the area as we have increased population, and specifically encouraging folks to get out of their cars, thinking about multimodal use, but not only that, especially for our seniors and families who will be living in this area and wanting to make sure that access to transit is both addressed head-on and is an important issue, and that we're doing it specifically for the population that will be moving in is critical. So thanks for being here today and for sharing with us any of the process that you will go through to analyze new transit needs.
So I just want to stipulate again, I'm a representative of the Department of Transportation, not King County Metro, so I will be speaking to what they have in their adopted policies and plans. And so, pardon, the main document that we'll be using and that Metro uses to guide their service decisions is their King County Metro Service Guidelines, which is a part of their strategic plan. And this document outlines how they add, reduce, and restructure service and guides a lot of their service decisions. They make investment decisions, so they add additional service based on several criteria. The first and foremost one they look at is passenger crowding. So when routes are overcrowded, they will add service to meet that demand. Second, they look at schedule reliability. So when buses are chronically late, they will try to address that. The third criteria that they look at are what are the target service levels for a corridor? And to define that, they base it on three criteria. Productivity, which is a combination of jobs and households, so this project will add households. Social equity, so the number of low-income and minority residents along that corridor. And geographic value, what connections does this route provide to regional centers? So that is where, that is the quantitative process that Metro goes through to assign target service levels. Looking at the Fort Lawton site, there are two routes that serve it, Route 24 and Route 33. Both of those have identified target service levels in King County Metro Service Guidelines and their 2018 annual system evaluation report. The Route 24 is identified as a very frequent route, which would have 15-minute service in the peak and off-peak. This is a goal that Metro has assigned. It is not the current frequency. But what Metro does is they compile a list of what they think service should be, given the productivity, social equity, and geographic value. And as resources are available, they will allocate those to increased service levels on those corridors. Route 33 is, has a target service level of frequent, which would give it 15-minute service in the peak and 30-minute service in the off-peak in night. Both of those routes operate generally about every 30 minutes with some increases in the peak periods. So both of those target service levels would be increases from today's levels. This is consistent with Metro's long-range plan, which they define as Metro Connects, which establishes a 2025 and a 2040 transit service network. Both of these routes are identified in that, in the 2025 network. And then there are, there is an additional route in the 2040 network. So they have long-term plans to continue to serve the area and to increase service as resources allow.
Great questions. Councilmember Backscha? Yes, and thank you for bringing up the point that there's going to be a significant number of seniors in this new development. Is there an opportunity to look at like the access vans or some of the circulators that could be different than just the 24 and the 33? I'm just, would like to ask that we request Metro to take another look at that because especially if we've got people that were walking, it's difficult to have to walk a few blocks to get to the 24 or 33. If we could plan ahead about these, the access van type, I'm not, you know, saying it's got to be that, but something where we've got circulators that could come and come right into Fort Lawton, pick people up. And of course, by 2035, we'll have a nice light rail that gets down to Draviss. But between now and then, we've got to figure something else out.
Yes, I will follow up with them on that.
Thank you. The other piece about that is that, you know, one of the changes in the redevelopment plan was moving from having housing for homeless families and really converting it into the PSH model for seniors. And part of that acknowledgement was the way in which services are delivered is different. And the ability to provide really targeted services onsite for the population, for seniors, kind of changes some of the transportation needs for the people living there. It doesn't mean that people won't travel, but because many of the services are provided onsite, the needs are a little different. And Catholic Housing Services is aware and has done before fundraising and other opportunities to use vans to serve populations in their senior buildings, and that's something that we have talked about.
So I think one of the issues that has come up in the past is grocery stores. And, you know, the closest one is the QFC down on Draviss and close to 15th, but it still is a big schlep if you don't, if walking isn't easy for you. So it's something I'd really like, as Catholic Community Services is looking at that. You know, and we've also talked about having a mobile grocery store. And maybe this is an opportunity, because we talked about it, going to Magnuson Park with some of the low income there, and maybe this is an opportunity to pilot something like that.
I'm glad to hear that other people are talking about mobile grocery stores.
Councilmember Backscha, did you have another comment as well?
I do, I have a question. So the Metro Service Guidelines, by which they decide to add additional resources, crowding, reliability, and then the third one, correct me if I'm wrong too, service frequency goals. Is that?
Yes.
And the, you're, the one that we're focusing on for purposes of Fort Lawton is the service frequency goal.
Right.
And that's focused on the frequency of a route at different times of the day.
Correct.
So my question about that is, are these surface frequency goals based on current use of those routes, or is it based on projected future use of the routes?
So sort of both, and I'll elaborate. So those three categories, that productivity, social equity, and geographic value, is that first step in the process, in which they look at kind of the potential of the route and what riders could be there and what connections it serves. And then they have a second step in which they look at what the current loads are on the route to see if they need additional boosts. And so that second step is an opportunity to increase service levels even further above and beyond the potential based on current utilization.
And so within the context of potential, was it part of the analysis that this site would be developed with this density of housing?
No. So the system evaluation evaluates this system, jobs, and households that are on place, or in the, sorry, that are built today. So they're all based on the current year, and this is an annual evaluation that Metro does. Metro Service Guidelines also provides guidance on planning for upcoming development, and they do this citywide. So as things are coming online, they do take that into consideration when they look at service levels and any service decisions they make.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other comments or questions?
No, it's great. Just keep us informed, would you?
Definitely, will do.
I'm just going to put a plug in right now while we're talking about frequency. Would love to be part of future conversations as we look at what frequent transit actually means. Ideally, having 10 minutes between buses coming is, I think, a really great way to make sure that people can rely on transit no matter when it's coming. I'm very excited to be moving from one area that came every 20 minutes to now an area that has bus service every 10 minutes, and it makes my life a lot easier. And I think as we think about people getting to doctor's appointments or to their kiddo's schools or to work, making that transit frequency change soon. Do you know when Metro or SDOT will be engaging and sort of reevaluating the frequency measure?
Yep. So King County Metro identifies service levels for the county as across the entire, all 39 jurisdictions. But the City of Seattle actually has its own definitions of frequent. And what they define as very frequent is 10 minutes. So through the funding of the Seattle Transportation Benefit District, 71% of Seattle households actually have access to a 10-minute or better route within a 10-minute walk of their house.
Great.
And so the city has really used voter-approved funds to improve frequencies above and beyond what is established in Metro Service Guidelines.
Great. Comments? Okay, great. And then lastly, I don't know if anybody can speak to this, but the other big concern that we did hear in community was less related to, I think, the purchase details of the playfields for the schools, but also an analysis of whether or not new school services would be needed. Any comments about what the school district, school board will go through in terms of analyzing the need for new school services with the population increase?
Yeah, I can't say specifically the frequency with which they do their analysis. I don't know if it's annual, when they, when they look across the city of what schools' needs are. I know that for the purposes of the site, that the schools are interested in considering this a potential land banking for a potential school at a hypothetical time. And in the event that were to occur, of course, they would have to do their own environmental analysis, and it would be an additional process and a negotiation with the federal government to convert to that use. In the meantime, it will be the schools, the educational use on athletic fields. But they are contemplating that as part of their rationale for engagement in this opportunity.
Great. Kenny or Tracy, any additional comments you'd like to make today?
I have a question about process here at council. Because I have, I'm not a regular attending member of this committee.
You should be, you so fit in.
She's our alternate, so we know you're watching every time anyways.
Listening, maybe.
Listening, maybe. So this is, is this the first time we've heard this resolution?
No.
Okay. I know there's been multiple meetings, but we've had this specific resolution before us already.
Would you like to comment on that, Tracy?
No, you've adequately done that. We will have yet another public hearing. This will be the first one for this round on the 21st. And then the final, at least at this point, proposal is to come into committee on the 6th and vote out the resolution. And then the rezone ordinance, and then the ordinance to adopt the MOA with SPS.
And so as it relates specifically to the resolution, I understand, you know, obviously there's been a lot of negotiations for many, many, many years, and this resolution is moving forward a plan that has been subject to that negotiation. And I know we don't want to uptip the apple cart, but as it, you know, for instance, things like this, this parking lot issue, is there going to be sort of an issue ID section of this, of this discussion?
This was it, and this was the only issue that any of the committee members had raised to me.
Okay.
So, yeah, unless, there's something else hidden here.
All right. We've been hearing about it.
Yeah. Can I just say one thing about the public hearing? And I apologize for not being there, but I'm going to be out of state looking at, looking at our, that our retirement system. So it's not like I'm out fooling around and not going to be here to listen to the public on this topic. But if people will take copious notes, then let me know if there's anything that comes up at this next upcoming meeting on the 21st.
Great, thank you. And then just looking back over at our meeting minutes from before, from the April 16th meeting or the May 2nd meeting, the question was if there's any additional central staff memos or summaries, we would want to send those out to council again.
So we did send out a memo that.
I just didn't see anything attached to this agenda.
No, it was sent out actually just before commit, the first committee discussion to set up the schedule and the contents of the development plan.
Fantastic. I love, I'm sure I have it somewhere, but I'd love another copy.
I'll resend it to you. No worries, happy to do it.
And then as, as we're talking about this, just a reminder for our full council as well, there is a binder that was created. We'll make sure that that gets recirculated or that we ping each office. And that as we do, so that we bring the memo around, we'll also bring around my tiny amendment here. And if you do have any other questions, please let us know, ideally before the May 21st meeting, which is when we'll have the next public meeting. And then as a reminder, we'll have a discussion and possible vote on the June 6th meeting at, here at the Housing, Health, Energy, and Workers' Rights Committee at 9:30 on Thursday. Thank you for all of your interest in this. I want to say especially thank you, Chip, and to the Department of Parks and Rec for your quick work on helping us analyze whether or not we could convert part of that parking lot to more natural habitat for our friends who are feathered and otherwise. And I think it's a really great way for us to show that we're both being responsive to community concerns that are coming up and seeing this as a real win-win. So we'll see all of you on the 21st, if you're able to come to the public meeting. Otherwise, we will be back here in council chambers on June 6th for a final, for a possible vote. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Emily Alvarado, I'm always impressed by your presentations. And thank you for being here, so articulate about this. And you are often the front line for our Office of Housing. I've been at many public meetings where I watch you successfully navigate some people with different opinions. So I just want to acknowledge that and say thanks.
Thank you very much.
And thanks SDOT for being here with all of the answers to the questions that we pepper you with about Metro, over which you have no control. I appreciate it.
We appreciate being brought into the conversation.
Good.
Thank you all so much. At this point, I think we're going to go ahead and move into our last item of business. And Erin, if you'd like to read into the record item number eight regarding the Administration and Finance Plan. And we'll be at the table with Emily, Stephanie, and Tracy again. Thank you guys so much. Hi.
Agenda item number eight, Seattle Housing Levy Administrative and Financial Plan for Years 2019 and 2020.
Excellent, thank you. So welcome again, if you guys want to just read your name into the record, and then I'll have a few opening comments as well.
Tracy Ratliff, Council Central Staff.
Stephanie Velasco, Office of Housing.
Emily Alvarado, Office of Housing.
Excellent, thank you. So we're very excited to have this conversation coming up, which is something that I've been looking forward to for over a year now, as we've talked about opportunities for us to have true, truly community-oriented development be the first and foremost thing that we think of when we create new housing opportunities. The A&amp;F plan is updated every two years, and this is an opportunity for us to recalibrate how we administer the city's affordable housing dollars based on the housing needs of both the community and the future residents. This proposal is a plan for 2019 and 2020 for Office of Housing program years. This plan relates to the Office of Housing levy funds, incentive zoning payments, mandatory housing affordability payments, as well as other funding sources that the city administers for the creation of affordable housing. So this is truly our kind of moral compass for how we will use all of our housing dollars. A few notes on the timeline. After today's briefing and discussion, we'll have a briefing and discussion of potential amendments at the June 6th meeting. We'll also have on June 10th, the final Housing, Health, Energy, and Workers' Rights Committee discussion and possible vote. And then potential for a full council vote either that day or on June 17th as well. So we have three future meetings potentially planned for this. Our office has heard a great deal about the desire to make sure that they're including their voice in the A&amp;F plan, making sure that organizations rooted in and led by communities mostly impacted by housing unaffordability and displacement have truly a seat at the table and that their voices and words are reflected in the plan as we move forward. Some of those priorities are going to be reflected in our conversations today in today's update. The first being supporting community-driven displacement and harmonizing, I'm sorry, let me say that again, supporting community-driven development and harmonizing this policy with surplus land disposition policy that we passed last year in our committee prioritizes community-driven projects for city-owned surplus land. So let me say that really briefly again. Last year, we said that public land that is surplus, that is underutilized, should be prioritized for affordable housing. And the community said, absolutely, we support that. However, we are struggling to get the resources that we need to be able to actually build on that land. So yes, creating a policy that reserves surplus land for affordable housing is great in your disposition policies, but we really want to work on the A&amp;F plan to make sure that we're at the forefront of getting these dollars so that it can be more community-oriented development, especially for organizations who are helping to serve those who are historically more at risk for displacement. So really excited that that conversation from a year ago continues and their words are reflected here in going forward. The second issue that we continue to hear about is support for community preference and affirmative marketing strategies. And this proposed update really prioritizes community members with historic ties to neighborhoods for new affordable housing in areas with the, with high risk of displacement. So this is something that I know Councilmember Herbold has been working on. We're really excited that we're going to have elements of that in this A&amp;F plan as well. And third, I just want to highlight that one of the things that we're looking to advance in this policy is creating more resources for acquisition of existing buildings, which we've heard from affordable housing developers is an increasing need, a very, much more cost-effective way to increase affordable housing as the cost of new construction becomes more expensive. This is true both for our nonprofit housing developers, our folks who are working in community and community organizations that are beginning to get into more affordable housing development as part of their commitment to the community. And also something that we heard directly from the Seattle Housing Authority, where they've said the sheer cost of land and construction is so overwhelming that for them, it's much more effective to look at purchasing of existing buildings and making sure that they maintain affordability and update those buildings so that they're great options for the community.
Which also helps with some of our displacement pressures as well.
Absolutely, is an anti-displacement strategy as well. So I really want to just underscore some of the comments we've already heard, we've already said, thank you to the Office of Housing. I just want to say thank you one more time, especially in this time when you have so much going on. We continue to have you at committee, and you continue to be present. And so thank you so much for your time and attention, especially to the priorities that are coming from our office. As we've heard, that the need for including the community voice is much, much, much more than just about putting those words in the document, but being intentional about making sure that we're convening and creating opportunities for folks to actually co-write the policies together. So just a quick overview, Office of Housing was here to give a report on the 2018 Housing Incentives Meeting, or sorry, Investments Meeting at the April 18th meeting here at the Housing, Health, Energy, and Workers' Rights Committee. And some of the highlights I'd like to mention to ground us in this conversation today in terms of how we administer the 2019 and 2020 dollars revolve around the fact that in 2018, the city invested 68 million in our rental housing program to create an additional 1,197 affordable homes. City dollars used to create affordable homes are leveraged against other funding sources, including county, state, and federal dollars and private funds. In 2018, we rolled to leverage over $5 of public and private investments, $5? Okay. So for every $1, five, that's a good ROI. Okay. Leverage $5 of public and private non-city funding for every $1 of city investments. And by leveraging against outside funding sources, those homes were created at an average cost of, drumroll please, because everybody talks about affordable housing being expensive, about it being over $350,000 or $300,000 per unit. But when we leveraged these dollars, the average cost of creating these affordable units was $56,808.
The city's contribution. The price is still the same, unfortunately, but the city's contribution.
The city's contribution strung to $56,000. So I think it's just really important to highlight the amount of work that the Office of Housing has done, the importance of having folks who understand, the importance of having folks who understand how, how these dollars can be leveraged against each other, and the incredibly cost-effective ways in which we can do this when we do partner with our friends at the national level, at the state level, and at the county level. So, you know, I have a few more comments, but I think I'll hold off and see if you guys want to get into the meat of this presentation. And, and then I know our colleagues have some comments and questions too. Yeah, question?
Just a structural question. The legislation that we will pass approves two policies, correct? One of them is related only to the financial policies related to the levy, and the other is to all of the Office of Housing administered programs. Is that correct?
Exactly.
And which is which?
The Administrative and Financial Plan is related specifically to the levy, which is required by that ordinance. And our housing funding policies, which attach to the Administrative and Financial Plan, are our broader department policies.
Great, thank you so much.
And together, they make up our moral compass.
Yes.
I'm going to use that. I like that.
Our policy roadmap.
Our policy roadmap. Okay, great. So Emily, I know you have a small presentation for us, and then I think we have some questions and ideas we'd like to throw in there.
Great. So the Office of Housing is really excited to present our Administrative and Financial Plan and housing funding policies. As you said, this is our moral compass. And what we are doing is we are balancing many things through our policies. We are balancing a commitment to delivering for multiple populations, providing homeless housing, as the young fifth graders mentioned earlier, one of our proven solutions to homelessness, creating housing for a range of populations, seniors, people with disabilities. It is our way to achieve our equitable development and anti-displacement goals. And we are balancing those populations with an interest in affirmatively furthering fair housing, creating housing across the city. We are including in these policies our commitment to stewardship. We are making multimillion-dollar investments in real estate that we steward for at least 50 years by our incredible asset management team. And so part of that includes the hard work of ensuring that these are financeable and that they are sustainable assets in our community. And all of these issues come together and then get incorporated in our intense regulatory agreements and loan documents that we execute with our partners. So this is not just moral at a high philosophical level, but it then emanates down into the documents that we make sure as we are stewarding our public resources well. So keeping that in mind as we move forward, as we like to use these documents as a moment in which we can provide clarity, we can clarify our policy goals, we can make improvements to the way in which we administer programs, we also want to be clear that they're not the moments where we can completely move a ship. We are doing long-term real estate development and investment, and we want some level of consistency to ensure that we are creating cost savings and timeliness in the community. And with that, I'll turn it over to Stephanie.
Great. So actually, Councilmember Muscati set us up really well here. I think she gave most of what is on this slide, so I've been my, my job really easy here. But to answer your question, and in response to your question, Councilmember Herbold, here's kind of the outline of what the Administrative and Financial Plan does, and then what the housing funding policies do. In my notes, I had said that the A&amp;F plan is really our guidebook for how we manage the OH, Housing Levy Programs. I like moral compass as well, we'll start using that one. But really want to point out here, under housing funding policies, to reiterate what Emily said, is that we are focusing here in this update on providing clear policy direction while also having the flexibility to do implementation that is responsive to changing market conditions and, and the funding environment. So we want to stay nimble while also making sure that we're staying true to the priorities and values that the city has for these, these policies. There we go. Okay, so looking then at what the current existing housing funding policies are, and you'll see again that these themes are going to carry through and be highlighted through our proposed updates. But here are our, basically the office's continued priorities for investments when we talk about resident populations and the locations of our investments. So under resident populations, you'll see there that we prioritize low-income seniors and people with disabilities, homeless adults, families, youth and young adults, and also low-wage working people and their families. And then in terms of the locations, we want to emphasize investments throughout the entire city so that we can provide housing choice across the city and continue to, to affirmatively further fair housing. So you'll see the, those bullet points under there are, we're looking at high-cost areas, areas around transit, communities that are at high risk of displacement, and especially as, as Emily pointed out here, and we'll talk about a little bit more later, publicly-owned sites.
I just want to call out a specific resident population that the council has identified that, in some ways, you cover in your bullets, but a little bit more granularity, as mentioned earlier, when we had the appointee from Chip, I'm sorry, Capitol Hill Housing, boy, I'm dating myself. Specifically, low-income LGBTQ seniors is a priority population that the council identified, both when we put the levy on the ballot and then in a subsequent A&amp;F plan.
Absolutely. And one of the things I should say, that by virtue of having all of these priorities, of which there are many, and resources which are constrained, we don't hit every single priority every year. And that's unfortunate. I wish we could. But what we do is show that over the balance of many years, we continue to have projects that represent all of these priorities. And I think it's a bit of a longer strategic look to make sure that we're, we're delivering on all of these priorities.
And actually, LGBTQ is called out on page four.
Oh, I see that. I just wanted, it wasn't in the presentation, so I wanted to speak to it.
Exactly. You knew it's there.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so here's kind of the story of how we got to the point that we are, and that is really, as you can see here, driven by community engagement. I, this is my first time working on this housing funding policies update, and I've been really impressed by just the level of engagement by stakeholders, community advocates, council members, the mayor, and who are all bringing very diverse kind of expertise and experience, as well as passion, especially on the side of the community advocate. So you can see here in November, we started out just kind of a general scoping meeting to, to lay out what the direction of these funding policies might, update might look like. In February 2019, you can see that Mayor Durkin's executive order really included a few different policies that, and themes that we'll talk about certainly later. But specifically called out here is community preference, and that's going to be a big piece of what Emily's going to talk about. And there you can see also anti-displacement policies are kind of at the forefront of a citywide effort around that. We also had another community meeting there to review draft policies. And coming out of that community meeting, we found that there were a couple issues that really warranted some additional discussion. One, again, is community preference, which I'm sure we'll say probably about 100 times over the course of this presentation. And then the other one was an issue around open one bedrooms. And then in March 2019, we updated And then in March 2019, we updated on our website kind of the draft policies as they stood, and we welcomed public comments, which we received a few. And then in April, we brought these draft policies to the Housing Levy Oversight Committee, who really had the chance to do a deep dive and provide some additional recommendations on that front. Okay. And so here is where you can see kind of the major themes of this round of updates. And I think we put anti-displacement as the top one there because a lot of these other themes kind of cascade from that. They really are interwoven into this anti-displacement effort that comes, again, is sort of a citywide effort, also, again, a focus of Mayor Durkin's executive order. But these themes here that you see are not new. The housing levy funding policies have a long track record of addressing these themes. And just here in our latest opportunity for a policy update, we, the Office of Housing, again, with the community advocates and the support from council members, have really taken a hard look at what existing policies we have, how we can really bolster those around these particular themes. So you can see here, under anti-displacement, then we also are looking at the Strategic Acquisition and Preservation Program, and particularly around publicly owned sites, sustainable home ownership, and facilitating more effective program and administration. That's really looking just kind of at a suite of these technical fixes that'll really just help us to make program and administration a little bit more smooth. And then the last bullet point there is advancing racial and social equity. A fair number of these policies were actually informed by and grown out of racial equity toolkits that the Office of Housing led or participated in. And so, again, all of these themes kind of are interwoven together, and you'll hear a little bit more about each of these themes and the policies that are associated with each of these themes as Emily continues the presentation.
Thank you. So the biggest body of work reflected in this housing funding policy change is around community preference and affirmative marketing. And must start this discussion by saying, this grew out of community. This was work that was instigated by, asked for, and led by community. It was made initially concrete as part of the MHA resolution accompanying the MHA in the Chinatown International District. There was some urging from council, including Councilmember Herbald, to do research and exploration on this body of work. It was then made actionable by Mayor Durkin to move forward on it. And what this work is, is really saying, how can we hone our investments to ensure that people who are at risk of displacement, people who have been displaced, particularly in communities where there is a lot of displacement, how can we hone our housing investments to ensure that people are able to stay and thrive in their neighborhoods? And this is a complex body of work because it is really related to federal fair housing law. And as we presented previously to this committee, there is a way in which we can design these policies to affirmatively further fair housing and foster and sustain integrated communities. And there is also a way to design these policies in which we can have the unintended consequences of disparately impacting protected classes. We want to be in the former camp, not in the latter. So the policy that you see proposed is a one in which we can have an on-ramp to achieving the outcomes while mitigating any risk that we're violating fair housing law. So the policy included here is one that would enable developers who use affordable housing subsidy, U-City subsidy, to propose community preference policies in high-risk-of-displacement communities. So they may come to us, say, and I'm going to use interim as an example because I know that they are an advocate for this policy, as they move forward on Uncle Bob's Place, if they say, "We'd like to propose a preference for people who live in or formerly resided in the Chinatown International District to be able to participate in this building and have access to these units, we would work closely with them, providing technical assistance and guidance to help them achieve that goal and outcome, ensuring that the way in which they implement it is consistent with fair housing law." So--
Emily, can you give an example? That is a perfect project, and we know that so many people either feel like they can't afford to live in Chinatown ID area, or they've moved out for whatever reasons and want to come back. How do you do that in such a way that we're not violating the federal fair housing?
Yeah, so a little teaser, although it's not signed off on completely, but what we intend to do over the coming months is create guidelines that would help create an analytical framework of what the best parameters are about implementing these policies. And it would be based on a disparate impact analysis. This is what has been done in other places, like in California, who have put these policies in place. And it would say something like, although not firmly, "You probably want to extend your preference to less than 50% of the units." So for that 60% of the units, there is equal access by all people. And for 40% of the units, there is a preference. You're on a different list or have a different applicant pool for folks who can demonstrate that they currently reside in or formerly resided in the community. The guidelines might say other things about what demographic data is necessary to demonstrate as a baseline utilization of this policy. We believe that by restricting application of this policy in high-risk-of-displacement areas, we're already pretty set out to say that these are generally our more integrated communities. It might be, however, that someone says, "Well, times are changing, and I feel like my community, this community is really a high-risk-of-displacement community now, and here is some data consistent with the guidelines you're creating that justifies why we should be able to use it." Those are the kind of things that might come up in the guidelines, for example. But what you typically see is that for a minority portion of the units, you have different kind of access for people who have historic ties or current ties to the community, and that they get allocated a different level of points for gaining access to the property.
In our research of other cities who have done this, does the city have a role in creating lists of people who have been displaced and want to be considered in the future as these buildings come online?
Really good question. So it's different in different cities, and the answer is yes. Other cities take a far more active role in tenant selection, but that's because they do tenant selection in-house. It is something that our city does not do, as distinct from New York City, for example, who holds the list for their inclusionary housing units. We have chosen to use more third-party directly through the nonprofit and for-profit developers, and so we don't have that kind of infrastructure in place to do it. San Francisco, as another example, holds lists of folks who have been exited from former rent-controlled units. But they have different infrastructure in place that we don't.
It would occur to me, though, that the nonprofits aren't going to have this infrastructure either, though. Nobody's collecting the names and contact information of people who are forced to move from their community. And if I was a tenant living in a building that I was priced out of, I wouldn't think to contact somebody who builds housing in that community to say, "Hey, can you put me on that list sometime in the future?"
Yeah. I mean, part of the problem here is that I think this is a really important and valuable policy. It is also not right to return because there are going to be more people who are displaced or implicated than who will ever be able to get into these units. And so we can try to create lists, but that demand will exceed the supply. So what the focus here really is, is on community connections, partnerships with community organizations who can do the kind of advertising, organizing to let people know about these opportunities. And then, as our guidelines will probably do, suggest more minimal requirements for the purposes of demonstrating, you know, residency or any connection to a community so that it's not burdensome on people who have been displaced to show that they're connected.
So just relying on the, not just, relying on the affirmative marketing side--
Absolutely.
--of this issue and that separate policy to help drive those previously displaced folks to these opportunities.
Thank you. That's a perfect connection.
Going to talk about that because there is much more robust policies in place in this document than we've ever had on affirmative marketing.
And I'll just add real quick to that. What I also heard you say is that it's possible that the Office of Housing and creating guidelines will then be able to offer some maybe best practices or tools to these organizations. We've created a few community housing roundtables and asked folks specifically, you know, "What elements would you like to see in the A&amp;F plan?" One of the things that we heard from our friends in South Park is that they truly are sort of creating this ongoing list of community members that they know who are being displaced from the area that they grew up in, want to live in, that they work in. And so they do have, in some ways, kind of a sense of who's leaving, but want to be able to more accurately or robustly keep track of that information and then affirmatively market it once the buildings are created. So I hear that this, and we should remind ourselves, as we always want to remember, there's a huge list. There's a spectrum of all the housing options and policies and interventions that we need. This is one element along that list. So it is not the end-all be-all, but it could be a helpful tool, and if you all are creating resources, I think that will be helpful for organizations like that. Councilwoman Backshaw?
Thank you. No, I'll just, let's move on.
Okay. So with community preference, just one thing to point out about this proposed policy is that while it gives the space for city-funded housing to propose policies to us, it restricts that only to high-risk-of-displacement communities. And we think that is really important. I think that is the best guardrail we have to ensure that we don't have a disparate impact. I'm going to say this pretty explicitly. If we were in implementing community preference in a majority-white community, it is possible that that could have unintended consequences of providing an advantage to people of one race as opposed to others. And that is the exact fact situation in which, in New York City, that led to a legal challenge.
Very helpful. Thank you.
As Councilmember Herbald said, affirmative marketing is completely related to community preference. So if community preference is about selecting from a pool of applicants and giving advantage to a pool, I shouldn't say given advantage, because this is actually, in many cases, trying to address past government harms, so that's not an appropriate word, but giving priority to folks from a certain pool. Affirmative marketing is about making sure you create a good, broad, equitable pool of potential applicants. And so affirmative marketing is really important. It has always been in our housing funding policies. It has longstanding been a requirement by the federal government for the purposes of federally funded housing. But our policy to date has been very thin, and so we've seen that people have implemented it very differently. And in some cases, when they don't know what to do, they have had a hard time at doing robust affirmative marketing. What we want to do through this policy proposal is to give more, set a more clear expectation of what housing developers need to do, while still recognizing that they may want to do different things, and balancing that requirement with flexibility. So a few things you'll notice in this policy proposal is that it makes more clear, this emphasis on doing outreach with community-based organizations as a key piece of how we do affirmative marketing. One aside on affirmative marketing, we've seen really successful effects through the Liberty Bank Project by virtue of partnering with community-based organizations rooted in the Central District as a way in which we can attract potential applicants. And so affirmative marketing can be successful. We're hearing early from Building Nine Mercy's project that a different approach of engaging local institutions to find low-wage workers at those institutions was another effective affirmative marketing approach. So both of those would fit under this policy, which says, "Look at the location you're in. If you're in a high-risk-of-displacement community in particular, we'd like you to work with community-based organizations in that neighborhood. In other neighborhoods, there might be other community-based organizations you want to work with. We're asking for folks to include in the management plan more information about their strategies to address tenants who have other kinds of barriers, and think that we'll follow this up as we will the community preference policy with more robust guidelines that are informed by our community partners and our developers."
Building Nine, can it be ready to go?
It is presently leasing.
And when do people move in?
A few months.
Oh, 2019. These days, I'm like--
Yes.
I think summer.
Yeah, great. And the same thing true with the Louisa Hotel. I got to walk through that down International District. It is pretty splendid what they've accomplished down there.
Yeah, I don't know the timing of that.
But I just want to acknowledge the Gorders, Val and Greg Gorder, that put this idea together, and there's so many empty hotels down there. It would just be fabulous if we could do more of that.
Okay, so now we're going to get from a high level of our bigger policy changes to some more specific policy priorities and changes that are included in this legislation. The first is around development on publicly owned sites. As Councilmember Muscat has said, this is really growing out of some work that, a change in A&amp;F plan a year or so ago that allowed for opportunities of direct strategic acquisition by the Office of Housing to create additional opportunities on publicly owned sites. We are proposing policy changes that would more explicitly encourage partnerships with culturally competent and historically rooted nonprofit organizations when we're doing RFPs for affordable housing development on publicly owned sites in high-risk-of-displacement communities. We're also advancing permanently affordable homeownership on publicly owned sites. We know that it's going to take public land at a reduced or no cost in order to bring permanently affordable homeownership to fruition for households at or below 80% AMI. So what we know of in our pipeline, we just advanced Yakima, which was a publicly owned site. We're looking at Fort Lawton for permanently affordable homeownership. And when we go through all of the efforts to make land, publicly owned land, available for permanently affordable homeownership, this policy would allow us to go higher than our existing per-unit funding amount to bring those projects across the finish line. At Yakima, for example, we need to include some market rate units in order to cross-subsidize the affordable units. These are rare opportunities. We'd like the opportunity to be able to make them wholly, fully affordable, and to do that, we would need to increase the subsidy amount, which currently is based exactly on the unit size.
Thank you. As it relates to the Acquisition and Preservation Program, it references a loan amount for a total of $30 million outstanding at any time. My notes refer to a cap of $30 million for projects paid back through rental income and other funding sources, but suggests that we're removing the cap under this plan? Is that--
Good clarification. So in our next policy proposal around the Acquisition and Preservation Program, we see a lot of opportunity, particularly in the current market and with folks like Seattle Housing Authority, to provide shorter-term lending for acquisition of existing multifamily buildings or land, in some cases we get, for which we get repaid for those loans. Presently, the policies allow for, over the seven-year housing levy period, to lend a total of $30 million, even though we get those loans back. We have extended, I think, around $29 million or maybe the full $30 million at this point. So presently, our policies would not allow us to do any more acquisition and preservation lending. What we're proposing under this policy is to not change the $30 million cap, but to revolve that $30 million so as we're repaid off of those loans, we can relend those resources. So we expect over the coming years, we'll get some of the money back from projects who may or may not need our long-term permanent funding, and then we can reinvest that in a new acquisition loan.
So there's still a $30 million limit, but it revolves now?
Correct.
And it didn't revolve before.
Exactly.
And as it relates to the partnerships with Seattle Housing Authority, when it came to their HOPE-6 projects, we had expectations in our A&amp;F plan for those dollars as it related specifically to S.H.A. Is there a need to do that? I mean, it's obviously a different scenario. We were really-- we really-- We really cared a lot about replacement housing for those HOPE-6 projects. So we wanted to make sure that when they were building replacement housing, that they weren't using a lot of levy dollars to fulfill commitments that the city was putting on them in exchange for agreeing to the project. But I'm wondering if there are scenarios that we need to consider as it relates to our partnership with S.H.A.
Really good question. I think in this case, our partnership with S.H.A. is maybe the most mutually beneficial thing that can come out of revolving this $30 million fund. And that is that what they're looking for is short-term lending to purchase existing multifamily developments that are not presently under the housing authority's purview, to bring them into the housing authority's portfolio. And long-term, they will have the resources to operate that building. They don't need our long-term money. We would love a partnership in which we can help them with short-term financing to save overall governmental costs while then being able to get our money back and reinvest it wholly in something else. So we see this as an exciting opportunity to work with them. The partnership that we could have with them is different than our lending in other projects like presently at Midtown Center, where we both provided an acquisition loan, and we anticipate that we will be the long-term capital funder.
Just a follow-up question on that. I think somewhere in here, we have a section related to community workforce agreements. And it's Priority Hire, obligations to utilize apprentices as well as pre-apprentices and draw, require contractors to draw from workers from distressed communities. I'd like to know more about what our expectations will be for projects built by S.H.A. using city dollars. I began to hear in the community that there are some concerns about that.
What are the concerns?
That S.H.A. may be declining to follow the city's lead on its expectations for utilizing Priority Hire.
Thank you. I will look into that. I do want to clarify that our present policies don't require a community workforce agreement on city-funded projects. What we do require is prevailing wages as set by L&amp;I, residential prevailing wages, or Davis Bacon if federal dollars are used. And we do have WIMBY and apprentice utilization goals as well. So we have a strong labor equity component. Our CWA has been piloted for the first time or will be piloted on the K site, and we're doing an analysis to understand the benefits and costs of using that agreement. S.H.A. has used project labor agreements previously as part of Yessler Terrace. I know they have their own experience. They also have their own federal requirements that they are required to use. But I'm happy to report back when we invest our dollars at Yessler Terrace, for example, which kinds, what does that partnership look like?
The, under the previous administration, there was an executive order as it relates to Priority Hire and what our expectations were for public-private partnerships. So to the extent, it was an executive order, was not enacted into law, but to the extent that we could use that as a way to move towards negotiating those elements in, not just S.H.A. projects, but other projects that are getting substantial city resources upwards of, you know, in, under Priority Hire, it's more than $5 million. And just taking a look at last year's levy awards, there are several projects that have upwards of $5 million awards.
And again, to reiterate, I think when the A&amp;F plan came before us a couple of years ago, the first one, there was quite a bit of discussion about this. And there really was feeling that we needed to understand what would be the implications on the housing cost of doing community workforce and--
Hopefully, we've figured that out the last couple of years.
Well, they're in the process with the K site. And I don't think you have that data, but we are waiting to see what the implications are. Because as we try to balance out all these competing policy goals, we need to understand what are the trade-offs. If we're going to impose those requirements, then what does that do to the cost? Does it impact the cost? We think it may. We certainly hear, I have heard from S.H.A. that there are some consequences or implications of that, and it would be good to have them come in and talk about that. But I just think we need to understand before we just say, oh, we're just going to have them all apply and not understand, well, that might have an impact on production, for example, and the number of units and so forth.
I will flag that this is a priority of mine as well. And we are engaged in conversations with folks in the building trades about these pieces. Heard yesterday that there is some initial feedback from the K site, and so we'll be looking forward to bringing that forward. Was excited to include some of the language in the K site construction last year so that we could advance our commitments to not just creating affordable housing, but making sure that those who are building it are also not then eligible for the same programs--
Eligible for affordable housing.
Yes, that they, for the units that they're building, ideally. That helps us live our values. Councilwoman Bagshaw, I know you have to leave.
Thank you. I've got a place to be right now. So thank you again. Appreciate this presentation. Stephanie, thank you too for your participation. Tracy, as always, thank you very much for bringing this forward to us today. And I will follow up with you on a couple of other items. Thanks.
Thank you so much. And we'll have this conversation in front of us a few more times, so good chance to engage. And you have one more slide?
I'm going to finish this slide, and then I have one more slide.
Okay, great.
So after the policy changes around the Acquisition and Preservation Program, we're proposing a few changes to our homeownership program around home repair for low-income owners. We presently have two different loan terms that are offered for our home repair loans. As a reminder, these are loans for low-income people for health and safety upgrades to their home, typically a $20,000 loan that helps save a low-income homeowner's home and provides them with stability. We have a 3% term right now, a 0% term. We are proposing to turn it all into a 0% term to try to increase people's appetite for this program and don't believe that it'll have a significant financial difference. We're also proposing a pilot program to allow funds in our home repair program to support improved or increased habitable space. And that's a wonky way of saying that we want to further support sustainability of low-income homeowners' homes. And coming out of Councilmember O'Brien's racial equity toolkit on ADUs and DADUs, what was identified from low-income communities and communities of color was an interest in really just improving their homes, taking a mudroom or an unimproved area and making it habitable so that they can bring on additional household members and stabilize their home or bring on some rent-paying folks who can help provide income that'll stabilize a household. In addition, this could be used to finance an ADU for a low-income homeowner. And if it were to do that and then be rented out, that unit would need to be rent and income restricted. We're doing some outreach and engagement with community organizations to help implement this pilot and are excited about this expansion. Our more technical policies are as follows. First, we're proposing a change to our community relations policy that would help clarify the timing of OH-required community notification and outreach on our projects. I will say this, and that is, previously, it was that the majority of applicants for our single-funding round would prevail. In this case, we are highly competitive, and more projects do not receive awards than that do. And for that reason, we do not want to trigger requirements for significant community engagement until we know that a project has been funded and will be accurately and genuinely representing to community what will be included in their project. This does not change the purposes of neighborhood notification, which remain at an early stage in the process. We are seeing units on the market called open-one bedrooms. Again, this is a bit of a wonky thing, which is that there are units that are created that are neither really a studio or a one-bedroom, that are in between, might have half-walls, three-quarter walls. We see them as in two-bedroom units as well, where the second bedroom has a half-wall. Our office recognizes that we haven't been uniformly treating these units, the same in part because they're a market innovation. And so what we want to just do is have the authority to determine the way in which we're going to treat these units through a director's rule so that on a regular basis, we can really balance both the implications of cost and the expectations of tenants to be able to have good-functioning, reasonable apartments that meet their families and households' needs. We're proposing two policies as it relates to serving extremely low-income residents. One is that we presently have a policy that when a community has a certain level of extremely low-income housing already in that neighborhood, we will decline to provide funding to additional projects in that community. What we find, however, and the purpose of that rule is to affirmatively further fair housing across our city, ensure that we're providing access to housing across the city. What we find, however, is that in some instances, particularly with protected classes, households serving people with disabilities, we make a significant investment in a project. We make commensurate investment in healthcare facilities, and then another project that would utilize that healthcare facility is unable to be cited in that community because of this policy. So we are adding additional criteria to ensure that when we're making a determination about whether or not to extend funding for purposes of this citing policy, we include criteria like exceptions for buildings that would accommodate certain protected classes or recognizing in instances in which the data is not representative of what's happening in a particular neighborhood. There's also one last policy proposal. You heard Kelly Larson talking about operating in maintenance funds earlier. We presently, as part of the levy, we took an important step that we hadn't taken before, and we modeled that in buildings that we are creating at 50% and 60% AMI, we still wanted to achieve some 30% AMI units. That's the first time we are doing that as part of the last levy, where fundamental to our modeling is this idea that we're going to extract more extremely low-income units in those mixed-income buildings. However, we're allowed to use O&amp;M in those buildings, but our present O&amp;M policies say that you need to then adjust it so a person pays no more than 30% of their income on rent. This is a minor adjustment to say that where O&amp;M is used in mixed-income buildings, the property owner can continue to charge the 30% rent chart rent even when O&amp;M is present. And that concludes the policy changes that we've proposed as part of the A&amp;F plan and housing funding policies for this two-year period.
Great. So there's a number of other ideas that Tracy has been purveyed to in our conversations with sort of the community housing roundtables that we've been pulling together. Tracy, remind me, in terms of a central staff memo outlining some of what's being proposed, what the changes are, some of the ideas coming from the chair, potentially some other committee members, will that be something that will be present at our next meeting?
That's what the plan would be, is that I would come in with a memo that would hopefully have all of the proposed amendments and the actual language for you all to begin to look at and to discuss and to massage if you so want to.
Okay, great. So if the next committee meeting on potential amendments and briefing again will be on June 6th, how early would you like to make sure that we get all of those amendment ideas to you?
Well, ideally, within the next week.
Okay.
So that I can have the memo prepared and out to you all before you walk into committee.
Okay, so I'm going to just do some impromptu planning here. And Erin, you feel free to push back if the timeline is not what you had initially proposed. So if we look at end of the week, next week, May 24th, is that in alignment, Erin, with sort of our thinking as well? Okay. So that would give us another week plus a day, or I guess a half-day, Councilmember Herbold. A week plus a half-day for us to get ideas to you. I'd love to be copied on those so that if there's any councilmembers that are interested in amendments, we could work with your offices to make sure that we're thinking through changes together. And then that will give us, Tracy, a full week for us to look at some of the policy ideas and craft it into a memo so that then folks will have about another week prior to the 6th to take a look at that information. Okay, great.
Happy to work with you sooner. I'm already working with, actually.
Sure.
You guys are preaching to the choir right now because--
We have been.
Yes, that's why I said I'm talking to both the people who have been.
Yeah.
So it's great.
Any other comments? Okay. So I just want to say thank you. This is something that is covered in wonky sauce. And it is so exciting because I think it really does help us elevate what we've heard from community members directly, gives people an avenue for policy change. And I see this, these amendments, the plan itself, yes, we talked about it being a moral document or a guiding document, but also this is going to continue to live on in the grant applications and the priorities that you elevate there. I see this as one of our strongest tools for social inclusion, for poverty reduction, for creating healthier communities and more resilient communities. I think that we have talked a lot about how housing, affordable housing, both for renters and first-time homeowners, that this is, this is one of our, really our only tools to help address generational poverty minus reliable retirement systems, living wages, which we will continue to work on in this corner of the United States. Creating affordable housing, rental and ownership options is really a poverty-reduction tool. And I think it also helps us live our values as Councilmember Herbold and Bagshaw were talking about today with access to transit, reducing our carbon footprint, making sure that people have more mobility. And also, you mentioned earlier, and I think Councilmember Herbold and I have some comments out today in a press release that's either out already or forthcoming, it's out. You know, one of the things that I think really resonates from the author of The Color of Law is that our past segregationist housing policies were intentionally created to be racist and exclusionary and classist in nature. And those, we have to remember, were public policies. And it is going to require us as public administrators and both members of the public to demand that our public policies truly change, to better reflect our zoning and housing policies, to undo those historic wrongs that were embedded in our public policies in the past. So this is, I think, truly an effort for us to be conscious and intentional about including communities of color, our lowest-income workers, those who are disproportionately affected by displacement, as we create new investment policies and strategies for the city. So I thank you for working with us and for continuing to engage with our community partners as well as we look forward to future amendments to this plan. And then to also recognize that it's a living document, because even after that happens on the 6th and the final vote, on the 17th, on the discussion and possible vote on the 10th, and then if we need to, another holdover for the 17th. But ideally, knock on wood, we can get this done in three meetings, and will be done on June 10th. Councilmember Herbold, thank you so much for your presentation, or for your presence the entire meeting today. Very excited to have you. Wanted to let folks know that our next committee meeting again is on June 6th at 9:30 a.m. The Notice of Intent to Sell will be discussed in that meeting, which is another great, hopefully, housing displacement mitigation tool and affordable housing tool. Our Seattle City Light Review Panel appointments, rent bidding legislation, if you'll remember, we, this was one of the first policies I passed to prevent the rent bidding platforms and created a moratorium, and good news was coming from the court. So we just need to extend that rent bidding legislation for another year, I believe, is what we're going to do. And then the Administration and Financial Planning and Housing Funding Policies, can we come up with a cool new name for this? The Moral Compass Document? Yes, okay.
As long as we're talking about new names for things--
Yes.
Can I suggest, it was, it's not my idea, it's been suggested to me by others, that we might want to think of a different name for a weatherization program that is more about our desire and interest in promoting green buildings. Maybe a, I don't know, a greening building program since it's focused on energy and the preservation of energy and--
New Green Deal Housing Policy.
Yeah.
Okay. Also, a reminder for folks, if folks can join us on May 21st at 5:30 for the Fort Lawton hearing, we will be here in council chambers. If you are desiring childcare, you can sign up when you get here for the day of check-in. But also, if you know that you want it, it's complimentary, it's free. Please email our office, either Farida Cuevas or ashleyharrison@seattle.gov. Parking is available in Sea Park Garage located between Cherry and James Street on Fifth and Sixth Avenues at a discounted rate of $5 that begins at 4:30 p.m. Please note, the garage closes at 10 p.m. We will try and get everyone out of here before then. I want to also note that this is Housing Affordability Week. Last Monday, we passed a proclamation honoring May 13th through May 17th as Housing Affordable, as Affordable Housing Week in Seattle. Housing Affordable, housing, I keep transposing those letters, those words. Affordable Housing Week will be a full week of events and celebrations, advocacy across a dozen cities in King County. This is well underway. It is Thursday, you still have one more day to engage. There's more activ-- There's more activities that you can find from our partners at HousingConsortium.org at the HDC website. We hope that you will join in the many events happening throughout the week. The idea of this week came from East Bay, where they've been organizing a Week of Action for 20 years. And nationally, there will also be a Week of Action, May 30th through June 5th, focused on federal affordable housing investments, as we all know have been declining over the years. And without those dollars, it is going to be very hard for us to reach the 156,000 affordable units that we know our region currently needs. So please do check out all of the events happening this week. Thanks to our partners in the housing advocacy community for all of their work this week. And we will post more this—today and tomorrow about Housing Affordability Week. And we kept to that theme, as you can see. Today was all about housing, so we do appreciate everybody's work. If there's no other comments, we will see you on June 6th. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Erin. In recognition of Housing Affordability Week, thank you for all of your work on housing as well, and our meeting's adjourned.